Did you get my message? What's up? And don't forget, there's a long mission. Yeah. Yeah. Hopefully, we won't drop that. It's not possible. So I don't always like that. Yeah.
There you go. Teamwork make the dream work. There you go.
We don't work like that.
Teamwork make the dream work, Marco.
Okay, well, we're working here.
We got it all, buddy. We did turn it on.
I'm gonna be quiet since I'm a teenager.
No joke, anybody else.
We can get up here.
I thought you did. I thought you too. I thought you did. One thing about it. I'm gonna get a spanner.
Good, how are you? Here. I want to tell you. I.
I know that person. I like that chap.
So. I thought it was a big word. So that I was going back.
You can. I'm not able to come in here with me too. Thank you for watching. I feel so well, but I'm. Yeah, you know, telling for two boxes. The pot will be right. There's enough to come. Yeah, this is so funny.
Yeah.
I want to bring it up. Well, yeah. Andy's gonna be right. Do it. I don't want to change. I'm not going to let you. I would have to go down with the game. I don't know. I've had a close review. We're gonna do it. So I'm gonna make sure. How is he? Well, he wants probably to go over. I mean, she takes her at home. She'll die. He's not not letting you. He might not know that I lost brother. Then he comes to the little picture. Close that and break and pass the fire. And it will, of course, I don't see that. They know. Oh, I bet because.
That's good.
Not going to check.
One box is the check.
But. I bet it's because it's in there. Um, automatic thing. And then if you change it. And create the meeting. Then you gotta go back and change it again because of this. I can see. Who's gonna remember this? Obviously not. Good thing we only got two more meetings left there. Don't.
Right, I saw what this was set to when I came in. That's. No, no, no. I'm 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 familiar with this thing here. That's three one.
The three one so far. It's not looking too favorable for you. It's definitely not looking too favorable for you.
I thought it was like a change now. It is changing. He's called. They lucky I have not been my way. So I won't be there tonight. Clear. I thought it was Matt tonight. Oh, it's in the asking four in the morning. Well, no. It's something around afternoon, evening. Oh.
Still doesn't make the ice storm will be done this however. Yeah, we're gonna see.
Tomorrow. Before we start the meeting, did anybody get their street uh done and then besides? Six people?
No, I saw more than on you.
You might speak speaker.
Okay.
This one. Even though. No, it was just speaking of. Everything. This stuff along with the. Oh, yeah. I'm like this. We see that. Too.
That's how you run.
Yeah. Anyway. Uh, that location. I said that's what you need to do. What was that? What you're gonna do?
Very good.
Let's read, don't be angry.
All right, folks, we do have a lot to go over and discuss. I'm gonna go ahead and call the study session to order at six thirty two P M. We can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
At the pledge of allegiance. Good flag. That'll be United States of America. And to the public or which of states. On the nation. If this will. Would they receive interest?
So the third thing, if we can take roll call for us, please.
Most of them are William.
President.
Free present. Jackson here. Baller here. Davis, President. Friends. And Mayor's here.
Here. All right, so for action items, we are going to approve of the Michigan Municipal League Conference attendance, which will be held on April eighteenth and nineteenth. Does anybody have any questions or comments in regards to this item?
That's Atlanta, right?
Yes.
Just the early bird registration. It started, it opened up on March thirteenth. So if we have any members of council are interested, we'd want to get registered under the early bird special. Regular registration rate is four twenty five a person. And that's on or before April tenth. So if you're interested in learning, in attending, let us know and we'll get you registered and make sure.
Do we register a college?
Joe. What's the name?
What's the name?
April eighteen through and nineteen. And it's at the um the Lansing Center.
I want downtown Lansing. I'd like to go.
Is anybody else expressing interest other than Mayor Burton Jackson?
It's like, cause remember, Laura and Davis.
We got five right now.
Yeah, I think I might go, but let me get, let me get with you.
Good boy.
Let me get with you. I gotta make sure.
Is there like a certain number that we normally send?
I think in the past, we've sent about three have gone, but I I would leave that up to council to make that determination.
I just wasn't sure like if we kind of staggered.
I know usually if you haven't attended, we encourage those who have not attended a conference that year to go. Um, but said, I will let that, let you all make that decision.
All right, any other questions or comments in regards to that item? Okay, all right. Next will be the approval of the Whitman River Trail Proposal. Have any question for City Manager Snyder in regards to this item?
Or instead, go on the phone, say, John, a pile.
So it's going to go up North Alvin Street and it's going to be on the east side of the street. So it's going to tie into the new bridge structure and go right up to and right before the basketball courts.
So you got the map in front of you. Don't forget.
Oh. Yeah, I hadn't looked at that, but it's still.
So there's, there's where the basketball courts are. So. It'll run up and then it'll cross over to the east side of the street.
Yes. I see that, but.
So are they gonna pave the east side of Albion Street? Um. In the trail type of pavement or are they just gonna put the signage up over there?
No, it's gonna be a paved trail. So, yep, they're gonna construct a paved trail along, along North Alvin Street. And then it's going to go up State Street to connect into Macintosh Park. So to be on the east side on North Alvin Street. And I know, I think we discussed at the last meeting, another potential project we could apply for grant funding is um creating a trailhead right outside of like the basketball courts, the same location where you'd like to put a parking lot so it could serve as a trailhead, parking space for people attending, attending the park or looking to hop on the bike trails and go there. So kind of tying into what's been happening. I mean, this is just where we received that three hundred thousand dollar grant through um the D N R. I mean, requires an engineer firm to assist us with that. The total cost of the proposal is also aligned with the eligible reimbursable amount through the grant. So it will be covered through the grant funding. This is.
Okay. Do we know when the basketball courts are go, I mean, the parking lot is going in um on Holland Park?
No, so that's not been identified, but that could be like the next step. So we'd get this done and then we could apply for when they open up their next round of grant funding. We could submit that project through to um secure some grant funding to get that done. But it kind of just ties into the goal of getting a new parking lot in Holland Park and just tying it in with the River Trails to make it designated as a trailhead, but it's parking spaces.
Okay. Oh, I get it. Yeah, that's what, okay, I got you. I got you.
And we've already coordinated this with the North Alvin Street Bridge Project as well. So it's going to be a wider section on that side of the bridge for, for that, the River Trail as well. So all of those projects are, are gonna tie in nicely together.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Great. Next, we will um be approving the resolution for Eric Kraus to be the next nine one one dispatch representative for the city of Albion. If those of you remember, we saw an application for him not that long ago for the library. So he was approved embedded for that. So we have a vacancy for the city of Albion. And so his application and resolution is going to be asked to be moved forward. Do we have any questions on this? Yes.
Uh, is he um replacing someone or is this a new position?
Nope. My husband had a leave since he left the college and no longer works in Albion. Or can no longer attend the meetings? So, yeah. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Great. Next, we will be approving or discussing the professional service for the Albion Street Bridge Project. Do we have any questions for our city manager in regards to this?
He skipped one, the consumer's easement.
Oops, sorry about that.
Missed.
Excuse me. Really? It's so ties in, it's related to the North Alvin Street Bridge Project.
Yeah. My little tabs are a little too close together. All right. So the next should be approving the easement. Um. For the project. Do you have any questions in regards to this?
Are they putting in new infrastructure or just moving the infrastructure that they currently have?
More like the falls and.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure they just have to relocate. Is it correct, Director O'Brien, they have to relocate an existing pole that's there for this?
They're gonna relocate for. I believe it all gonna be used. Uh, there's already a couple of those down.
And you have a question for your Director O'Brien?
These ones, it's been reviewed by Attorney Harkness Office and and it's been approved. All right, okay.
We had them make, make a couple of changes when they sent us the draft and they made those changes. So we're good to go.
Are these uh basically telegraph poles?
That's just off, yeah.
Why do we have such, you know, why isn't it underground or why is it? You know, the traditional kind of pole that's can be a hazard. Um, someone was, you know, not necessarily you know, the fault of the placement of the pole, but it's just a hazard.
That, and I know there have been discussions on underground utilities. However, it's not as common. Um, it's a lot more to, for repairs. Um, Director Ron, if you have anything else that you'd like to add in that this is just to relocate more that are currently there. They'll be replaced with new utility poles so that hopefully we won't have any incidents with them coming down.
So looking at the easement that was forwarded uh by consumers. Those to be like, oh, be further away from road. Roadway than they normally are. Would make it safer for drivers. However, the run, the utilities out of the river would would be not prepared at all for consumers. Uh, and that would also include in repairing their lines. They're all always above, above ground.
I just noticed that, you know, certain section of town have more poles than other sections of town. And I know a young man was killed, you know, because of it. It is very close to the street. So if we're, I mean, is it ever going to change then? You know, because it is hazardous.
Return our pole uh or pull down, we're ready to do it over. It's great. They blow. Does it hurt? Uh, my hands, so you were just. Okay. This will, this will move it further to the south. I'm sorry, that's sad.
Mm hmm.
And then also on the second grid, it will be further to that.
Okay. Any other questions? Yep. Okay. Uh, next, we will be approving the SMEs professional service for the same bridge project. Do we have any questions for City Manager Snyder on this?
For SMEs.
Um, so it's a environmental, it's a company that's there, that's the name of the company. Um, so they provided a proposal. So this project, it requires um to have the, a complete fabrication inspection um of the proposed bid's bridge beams and railing. Um, so our project engineer, they solicited a few bits to complete this work. Um, one of the companies unfortunately is, has recently shut down its fabrication inspection division. So they do have one from SME. We've worked with SME with, through the land bank and conducting other environmental testing here in, in our community. Um, we did budget for this, however, it's a little higher than what was budgeted. We budgeted um twenty five thousand dollars and their proposal came in at twenty seven thousand five twenty five. And that's just simply because um it's a little higher. Um, the bridge beams are being fabricated in Mount Vernon, Ohio, as opposed to Decatur, Indiana. So there's a slightly increase for travel time and reimbursable expenses. But this inspection, it's required for the, the local bridge program that we are, um, we receive the grant funds through M dot and when the Federal Highway Administration requires this inspection to be completed as well. Sounds all right.
Down there at the bridge, when, when, when they take that down right like the sidewalk goes here and the bridge starts here and right down through here is a ladder tree brush and stuff. Are they going to, to move that?
That, I don't know. Um, they'll be able to, they'll provide the full scope of the, of what will be completed next week at the pre-construction meeting. Um, so they'll be able to, I can ask that question or be able to see what, what will be included.
And also in clearing, and we know that down, right down there by the bridge, there's two trees that's down in water. Is that gonna include that or does that have to go through state of Michigan?
I would imagine the state would have to approve it, but they, I know they're going to be working in the waterway. So if the, if the trees are in the way, they may have to clear some out so that they can get in to remove and, and replace the bridge.
Okay. If not, can we go to the state to see about getting that done? Okay.
Any other questions? Right. Next, we are going to be asked to approve the E D C bylaws to amend adding the city manager as an ex officio member. And we actually have our CEO here enjoying some ice cream it looks like. Um, do we have any questions for Virgie in regards to this?
Um, I have.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, so I'm, I'm looking at it, it says, uh, as an additional non-voting ex, ex officio member. She's already a non-voting person, right?
Mm hmm.
But it's. So what are we doing here?
So it's, it's not in the bylaws as written like that right now. So that's why we are mending the bylaws for it. Just to make it official.
Has, um, oh, excuse me, Madam Mayor. Has there been any issue with um with the city manager being a, a non-voting member where we need to make this amendment? As far as, um we have non-voting people that attend our meeting as well. They provide us with input and insight on different things, but we don't necessarily um have non-voting members of our board. You get what I'm saying?
Mm hmm. I mean, Virgie, if you wanna chime in.
Yeah, so um we have a twelve number board. And nine of those members are voting members that are appointed by mayor and then approved by council. And those members, because we have the requirement of having some experience or some, you know, growth and development experience hoping to, you know, align the mission of. There are three ex officio positions. Um, the one of them is the Chamber of Commerce leader president. One of them is the Sheridan Township Supervisor and one of them is the Albion Township Supervisor. And they play a role to inform us what's happening in those areas. Um that's been in the bylaws forever. Um, occasionally, you know, sometimes the city manager attends kind of in an ex officio role um and participate in conversation. So as we are trying to clean, I'm, I'm trying to make sure I understand how things are supposed to be going. And if, if, if the right thing is that she's in that role, then it shouldn't be in the bylaws that way. If for some reason we think we already have enough information from the city that we had a mayor on the, on that council too. So if somebody thinks we already have enough information, then we don't need to require the city manager to attend another meeting. But that's been what's been happening. So if we either, you know, sort of validate what's been happening or take whatever. So that's why I'm there. Um, I'm trying to look at what's supposed to be happening or what is happening to try to record.
Okay.
And for those of you that were at the last E D C meeting, you know, my sentiment was, there's a lot that goes on um here that I don't know about. You know, Haley is here every day doing the work. So when topics of conversation come up and they're looking for input from city side, I may not know what's going on because that's not my job. I'm not here in city hall every day. So that's why it's um helpful to have Haley's insight when certain topics come up to get correct information so that the E D C can move forward.
It sounds like, oh, excuse. Yeah, it sounds like a good idea because as we're going to hear more and more about the big news article in the paper uh last week regarding some of the opportunities, we need everybody at the table and we need everybody contributing, you know, in terms of being involved in the total, in the total process of revitalization for our community. So I'm, it sounds good.
That's what we're saying.
Yeah, um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um. I would, I would think that being being that we have directors that add um value to the meetings and they attend the meetings, but they don't necessarily um they're not considered members of our board, but they still participate. And that, being that we've done this for over twenty years, I think the value add is already there. I don't know if we necessarily have to um make amendments to things that were created to address those issues.
Well, it was brought forth by the recommendation of Virgie. So that's why it's, it's here.
Thank you.
Wanted to make sure we're doing what was asked. Any other questions? All right. Uh, next, we will be asked to approve the revised fee schedule. The fee schedule was included in your, no, sorry. Uh, to approve the manicurstareson proposal. Sorry about that. And um the finance director's not here yet, so City Manager Snyder, if you want to.
Yes, so this is the, the Michigan Department of Treasury. They released the final version of the Michigan Uniform Chart of Accounts at the end of twenty twenty. Um, it was delayed and happened to be implemented due to COVID. So they really gave local units time to get those updated. Um, so this, the history of the uniform chart of accounts, it dates back to um when the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act was initially passed. That just for finance, all units use the same chart of accounts or funds for um their budgets to identify different accounts. Um, unfortunately, ours was supposed to be implemented by December thirty one of last year due to transition within our finance officer, office. Um, the W treasurer position was vacant for majority of twenty twenty two and the transition of our former finance director, we did not get that implemented. Um, so since our new finance director has come on board, he has gotten a lot of things um cleaned up, brought up to speed and getting taken care of. This, we, he's been working with our auditor. Um, with the upcoming audit for twenty twenty two, it will begin um early spring. We are required to have this in place. So this kind of falls in line with getting this um conversion completed. They have provided a proposal to assist the finance office in getting this new chart of accounts implemented. They believe it'll be about a forty five day turnaround time for this project. Um, so they just provided a proposal to assist us in that project. And that will fall in line with the time for us to get started with the audit. So we are making good time with that.
Questions for City Manager on this topic? Right. Next will be to approve the revised fee schedule. Questions in regards to the information provided? What, Attorney Harkness, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to remind you to keep an eye on the time from public.
Mayor Burton Jackson?
Uh, what was, what was changed on that?
The only thing that was added are the fees for the rental registration program and they are um would be under the planning department. Getting that page.
I meant one. Planning department. Okay, say sixty eight. Yeah, say sixty eight.
It's that page seventy two is where the actual. Um, will begin.
Okay, sir. What page was it?
Page seventy two of the packet.
Seven. Oh, seventy two or seven.
Seventy two.
That's why I was trying to think.
So you said the building department.
Yeah, yeah, cleaning building. So the rental, the registration, it's a twenty five dollar fee. And then there are a breakdown of um the annual registration fee um for a late registration fee and then the annual inspections. And it's broken down by how many units you have. I mean, when talking with Safeville, we had to be, they had to kind of be in agreement on the, the fees that we set since they will be completing this work for us. Um, and they write that this is probably the lowest fee that we could implement for them, for it to be worthwhile. Um, and they write that this is probably the lowest fee that we could implement for them, for it to be work file for them to complete their service for us. Reminder, this ordinance goes into effect in March, so we need to get this, the fees added to the fee schedule so we can get going with that registration.
This for rental certification? I was gonna say, what is that, I guess, there's a combat. Any other questions? Um, keep in mind the time, do we have anybody in the gallery that would like to stand and address council? So you have three minutes. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some support.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
opposed. All right, study session adjourned, six fifty six, be back in four minutes, folks.